I did it, I worked with him.
That was no way.
I got injured three months.
That, um.
And you're only asking.
It was. We're missing Carolyn, we did that and said that he wasn't kind of making.
Yeah, right.
To being asked.
Good, alright, so let's see, which time is six oh five, that's not bad. Um, okay, so did everybody have a chance to look for minutes? Oh, we want to do attendance first, sorry, you know, I'm gonna forget something every time.
Totally fine.
Single. You make it.
Sorry.
So, consistent that way, okay.
We like working with humans, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Megan Brizley here, virtual.
Here.
Sarah Pease.
Here.
Steve Brown.
Here.
Elaine Reslow.
Here.
Mary Lou Lawrence. And Catherine Harvey is here, we're missing Carolyn, Coffee, and Alex and Jerry. Okay, so now did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, um, I didn't, I was not at the last meeting, so I'm not. Anyway, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make such a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so that is approved, Megan.
Great, um, so we've had kind of an interesting month. Um, unfortunately, the recreation department flooded while Ted was on vacation, um, over the Patriots', um, day weekend, so it was a long weekend, and the pipe actually burst on Saturday, and, um, went all the way through until Tuesday morning when we found it. Yeah, so recreation, the, um, entire department has needed to be ripped up, and we had to go through everything and, and, you know, write down what needed to be replaced and all this kind of. So, um, so that was a focus for about a week and a half for me, is just relocating all the offices for them. Um, Ted is now up at Safe Harbor, his, um, assistant is in, um, his assistant director is in the story room, Ryan, and Jenna's upstairs, and so we got everybody situated. But meanwhile, there's been some great bonding between the library staff and the recreation staff, um, which has been really great, and Ted and I have been talking a lot about the pavilion project, and he's actually very excited about it, and he's thinking about more fundraising ideas. So, it's just been a really, you know, it's an unfortunate thing that happened, um, but it's just been a really nice thing for our departments to just be forced to merge. And so, um, so it's turned into a positive, yes, yeah. Uh, we have our summer newsletter, I'm just gonna give you a quick sneak peek of that. Um, that should be in your mailboxes soon.
Maybe we'll have to wait.
Maybe you'll be waiting for your mail, in your mailboxes, let's see.
You have to dismiss the pageless format.
Well, yay. Um, so, uh, the summer reading, um, theme this year is find your voice. Really bad a thousand with technology today, there it is, there, okay. Um, uh, so we've created some banners for the outside that'll go up after, um, July one, um, with that theme. We have our regular program, summer reading program, that's gonna be under the tent, that's at four o'clock on Tuesdays. We have our usual suspect, but we also suspects, but we also have, um, a yo-yo guy coming as well. Um, so we're really excited about him. Um, and our regular kickoff party. Um, we have some interesting adult programming, we have, um, a woman coming to talk about survival guide of being an empath, an empath is somebody who, you know, um, who kind of feels, uh, more deeply than the rest of us, you could probably help me better with that.
Someone that's like very sensitive, it's not psychic, it's just like they take on the energy of people and they feel, you know, when you walk in a room and you just, you feel a lot of what people are feeling.
Yeah, yeah, like they, they tend to be, um, folks who are more affected by bad news or, you know, things that are going on in the, in the world and in our community. Um, and so this is a program that Norwell has been having on a regular basis and is wildly popular. And I think it's just, there's just so much bad news all the time, and it feels heavy on folks. And so this is somebody who can kind of help, help people through some of this, some of this heavy stuff. So it'll be interesting to see how it fits here in Cohasset, but, um, it's been such a success in Norwell that, um, we thought we'd give it a try.
I'm just curious, do they do it in the winter or in the summer, spring, summer?
They've been doing it through the winter. Um, but there was a lot of heavy things that went on locally, you know, and, um, so they, it might have been very timely for them, but, um, we've had some heavy things happen here in Cohasset. So, um, I think it might be a nice outlet for folks who are, you know, really still struggling with some of the, um,
So it happens more than once? It's, it's a whole series of visits?
Um, she's just coming once, we're gonna just, just see how it goes. Um, and if we feel like we have a decent group, we'll probably continue having her. Um, she's coming for the first time for free, just, you know, to open up the, the conversation, so, um.
It's called M-Path, M?
E-M.
Oh, okay.
P-A-T-H, M-Path, yeah, yeah.
After date.
Yeah, um, so.
I suspect, Megan, I don't wanna put words in Megan's mouth, but the summer might be, uh, we might not wanna judge from one visit in the summer because the summer is a more uplifting time of year, and that, um.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so you're depending on the, you might not wanna write off the idea, even if it doesn't go as well as you hope with this one visit.
Sure, yeah, and she also might be somebody that we need to kind of book last minute. Something weird happens around town or in a surrounding town, or, you know, something big happens in the news, you know, that we might need to, you know, pull her in to, to see if she can help out a little bit too.
Swatting comes in.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so we have our, uh, we have a YA summer reading book club. So, um, the, the books that are, um, appropriate for, like, their summer reading, um, at the end of the year, that they, at the end of the summer, that they need to complete, will have a book club for. So it's just kind of encouraging our, um, our YA readers, our team readers, to get their assignment completed, so this will kind of give them a, a space to do that. Um, we usually do henna tattoos, we've decided to flip it up, and we're gonna do airbrush tattoos instead this year. Um, it's always a big hit with the teenagers, they all come in from the beach to get their airbrush tattoos. Um, so that's kind of a sneak peek at, um, we have our regular authors coming through, and we'll talk about them through the summer as well, but, um, and then we have our page with our, um, community partners as well. Um, Safe Harbor and Elder Affairs, uh, submitted some items for us to put in our newsletter. And they do the same for us, which is really nice. Um, so we felt that our coffee pop-ups went so well that we're also gonna celebrate National Donut Day, and we.
Your donut king is so good.
They're so good, and they donated about forty percent of what we asked for, which is great. Um, so I think it'll be another reason for folks to gather who don't normally gather together, um, in the center of the library. Um, we've talked about this policy coming down the pipe quite a bit. Um, so I just wanted to discuss it tonight, get some suggestions, get some suggestions after the meeting, if people wanna send an email, um, and then hopefully have a final product, either the next meeting or the meeting after that we all feel good about, um, regarding this policy.
Do you mind putting it up?
Oh.
The link.
Let's see.
I can't mean a couple.
Oh, it's, yeah.
It's long.
Do, do we have, I, I, I saw that you shared the Randolph one, did Cohasset not have one?
We don't have one.
Do we have something like that, like, noticed it, it, this one superseded five other policies that they used to have? Do we have kind of a bunch of little things that amounted to this?
No.
So, so this would be a brand new start from scratch.
Yes, starting from scratch, and I apologize, I did attach the Randolph one, and it's because it was called the same appropriate behavior policy that still lives in my drive, because I have the same email address, blah, blah, so I did create one for Cohasset, which is here, um, that is not the same as Randolph's, so I apologize, I did attach the wrong, um, document to the, um, so this is different.
Send that, sort of, your version out.
I will, I will, for sure.
But the Randolph one has been time-tested, right?
Yeah, and so I did, you know, so, uh, I paid, appropriate behavior policies are very common in all libraries. In fact, they all have them, I think we're probably m- missing out in that experience. So, um, I pulled from Abington, language from Abington that I loved, I pulled some stuff from Randolph, I pulled some things from Hangup, but I have to tell you, they're all mostly the same, like, the language is, um, um, particular on, on a lot of things. Um, we have to be careful about First Amendment rights and, and things like that, so a lot of this has already been vetted. Um, I will say, um, you know, some of the feedback from the staff was that this was a little bit, even this is a little bit urban, um, because of the things that it's dealing with. But, you know, we're, whether we're in an urban library or not, we're a public library, and things happen in Cohasset and Hangum, and, you know, in, in any town. And so I don't wanna leave things out because this is Cohasset, and that's not gonna happen here. Because it does happen here, I promise you. Um, so I just think it's important for us to really cover as many bases as possible. I did take quite a bit out from some of the other libraries.
How sad was it that, you know, no doing your laundry in.
I know, I noticed.
Yeah.
The shower room.
Yeah, yeah, which doesn't sound relevant to us, but it is, we have an encampment right up the road of, um, homeless folks. Um, so it's not happening here now, but, you know, there are folks around that might just think to use our space that way. And so unfortunately, we have to set those parameters, um, so that we don't have a bigger problem. Um, so, just reiterating that it could happen here. Um, so the first paragraph I'll go over is just about that we welcome all people, um, to be, um, we're protecting the, the rights and the safety of our, uh, patrons, our staff, and our volunteers, preserve and protect the library's materials, equipment, facilities, and grounds. Um, so this is being put in place so that we can protect the services that we provide and the people that are here in this building. Um, the children's room, um, the children's room is reserved for children, their parents or guardians, and patrons accessing materials housed in the children's room. So in other words, it's not appropriate for adults to be hanging out in the children's room who are not using the collection and who are, don't have a child with them. Um, and.
And your banner outside the children's room.
Thank you, yeah.
That's really good.
Thanks. Um, and kind of the same language for the young adult room. While all patrons are welcome to go in and access materials and use the collection, the seating in the room is, um, in the room is reserved for young adult patrons or adults accompanied by young adult patrons. So that does, you know, our tutors or anybody who's assisting. But again, it's not appropriate for an adult to be hanging out in the YA room. Um, another paragraph about safety, um, and contact, conduct that's not allowed at the library. Um, and that this list is not all-inclusive. So engaging in any activity that violates state and local law, carrying illegal firearms or weapons of any kind, being intoxicated, we played with this a little bit, intoxicated by alcohol or illegal drugs, and selling and using, possessing alcohol or illegal drugs. Um, verbally, physically threatening or harassing other patrons, volunteers, or staff, including stalking, staring, lurking, fencing, touching, and obscene acts, um, soliciting or conducting surveys not authorized by the library. So as you might imagine, it's a gathering place that people will come and try to solicit folks who are trying to work on something, so we try to steer away from that, so we're not, um, bothering the people that are here, we don't want people to find this as like a hotspot to like gather information. Um.
Do we wanna wait until they're intoxicated to say that? Or do we want to say no if they're under the influence?
Well, neither, because they can't be here if they're intoxicated or under the influence. So then their surveys, it's just a whole nother thing.
No, 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 I knew she was going back.
He's going back.
Oh, I thought you were teasing me. I thought you were teasing me.
Instead of saying being intoxicated, should we just say being under the influence, so it's broader?
Yeah, so we had that.
Like, what if we're having an event, like a mini gala? That's, that was.
That's the conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, where you go to dinner and then you come over and look at.
Right.
Who else went, I, you know, I don't know.
It's.
We thought intoxicated, man.
Or we smell.
That you're, you're.
Yeah.
I like, yeah.
No votes for you today.
Wrong.
Yeah, we chose. Yeah, it comes with the type of behavior when you're intoxicated, whereas under the influence might not generate a behavior that comes along with it. Sorry again, Mary Lou, I thought you were teasing me about the service. Um, let's see, um, uh, distribution of flyers without permission of the library director, interfering with.
Would that be only inside, or what about if someone is standing in the parking?
So this goes for, uh, library or library property, so on the bold here, I didn't read all of it, so that's.
So we have someone that was arguing that the books in here were inappropriate, and they wanted to come and stand and hand something out to everybody that came in.
Mm-hmm.
This would allow you to say, you know.
Yeah, and I actually might not be able to say no. Because of the First Amendment.
Right.
Um, but.
Take it out to the sidewalk?
Yeah, I, well, yeah, I'd, I'd call council actually on that, if somebody actually was doing that.
Time, place, or manner is always the rule.
Yeah.
What's that explain?
Time, place, or manner, so you can restrict how somebody is expressing something within, you know, what you can say, you know, you could come between two and two oh five PM, but you can't say, like.
You can't be here at all.
You could say, you have to keep it on the sidewalk and on the building, but you can't say, no, you can't say, you know.
Right, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would be able to control how it's being, or when.
So, I don't know whether the town would have to get involved, what do you think about that, like?
I don't know, it's a public.
Yeah.
Public place, it's not a private enterprise here, so.
If it's a demonstration, then I would think they would have to, like, apply for a permit of some kind.
I don't know. But I, I. You have to apply at the dump.
Yes.
If you are having a case of shyness, at the dump, you have to have insurance.
Yeah, that's more of a solicitation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I think the town is.
Being able to pass out something about improvements in the town. Uh, I mean.
Yeah, I think you're right about that, though, I think I can't tell them they can't be here doing that, but I think I can control, I think you're right, control of, like, when, and, when it's done and where, when and where.
Right, it's just a question of whether it's enough coming from you, or whether it has to come from the town, that's my question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd probably have to call town council.
Yeah, you would wanna, you would, like, well, that's where you started, and I think that's the right answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Advice on that, just in case there was.
Would you mind standing over there, it's great, and I'm not gonna look at any screens?
So, because the other, like, example that's just quickly running off the bat is June is coming up, we're gonna have.
Right.
Uh, yeah.
Thanks.
There is some person that wants to stand by the front door.
About because of the hands now.
You know, flyers that say, everyone in this building is a pedophile.
Right.
You know, what are, what, what can and can't be done about something like that?
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I, I think that's a good point, that, if maybe it's worth asking before.
Yeah.
And first, for that.
Um.
I mean, if.
I've experienced like related groups too.
Escalating, you know.
Yeah.
Consider, you know, you got some phone calls, live phone calls, people hanging up. First year, last year was definitely ratcheted up, so.
Yeah.
With all the legislation being contemplated in state legislatures around the country, it's probably not that they did. Answer the question for them.
Yeah, yeah, alright, I will do that. Well, at least we have a placeholder now for that they have to get permission from the library, so at least if they have to come to me first.
Yeah.
And then it's on my radar.
And then you'll know what to do, I mean, I think that's, the language should be fine for this, you know, because you can be the gatekeeper either way, and then you know what the process is.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but.
Just on that topic.
Yeah.
If, if someone with the very best of intentions wanted to build interaction face-to-face with citizens, where would they go in order to meet the most people? Would it be just to be downtown walking around, or would it be?
Do you have a dump? Saturday.
Okay.
Sunday at three. No, Sunday at three, yes.
Okay, I just.
Farmer's market?
Yeah, can, can you do it? Okay, I just think it's important to have a way for people who have a particular point of view that isn't, um, restrictive, that they have a way to, uh, use our resources in some way.
Yeah, I think the library's the place, like, either that they've met at a library program, or they're having donuts together, Donut Day, something like that, but I, and so, and it's the place to meet after for a longer conversation. But I don't think the library is a place to meet in the sense that people are doing their work, and they might not wanna meet you while they're, you know, sitting at a table. Um, so that would be my response to that, like, I don't think it's not a place to meet, but I think there's appropriate venue, um, like, times and programs.
Sure, to protect the, the ability of users to.
Yeah, to also, the folks who wanna sit here in silence or whatever, protect those people as well.
Okay, thanks.
Um, let's see, damaging library property, or interviewing, interfering with staff's ability to perform their duties, um, messing with our materials or computers, loud disruptive behavior, foul language, hate speech, hate speech, I'm sorry, I can't speak tonight, or rudeness to staff or other patrons. Um, and that's something that's in all the, um, appropriate behavior policies. But I also noticed was at the doctor's office the other day, when I was walking in, there's signage that says, you know, be respectful to the staff and the other patients that are here.
Um, since COVID, it's been a huge problem in many healthcare facilities, offices, hospitals, throughout the state, um, people, you know, they're angry, they're upset, they, you know, things take longer now, they've been restricted, and so it's, it's, it's been a problem.
Hmm.
And it's hard for healthcare providers.
Yeah. Shouldn't be having that's too bad. Um, fighting, challenging to fight, running, pushing, shoving, or throwing things, um, using the restroom for reasons other than using the restroom, bathing, laundry, changing clothes, uh, tobacco marijuana use, um, in the building or fifteen feet from the building or the playground area. Littering, um, using audible devices without headphones, pages, pagers, um, silencing cell phones in the library, um, entering and, and or residing in, residing in the library without shoes, shirt, or with offensive body odor, personal hygiene. We do have a lot of people kind of running without shoes on, um.
Kids?
They just come from the beach. Yeah, they're just running in, running out, but I just think it's important that we have something. The other thing too is, to have this makes us not liable for things. So if somebody's running in with their pair of feet and they step on a tack, we can say, well, it's been our policy that you need to have shoes on. Um, we had a situation where we had a little, um, one and a half year of running, and she fell, and, you know, we had a problem, um, because we also didn't have anything that says no running in the library, so, um, laying down or sleeping, that's something that's really common in the library, of course, people are reading, um.
On purpose, or they just fall asleep?
They just fall asleep, but the, the concern here is that people might be having a medical emergency, and you just don't know. Um, so we do wake people up if they fall asleep in the library, um, nine times out of ten, there's no medical emergency going on, but you just never know, and it's just not an appropriate place for somebody to, to zonk out, so.
I'm just so curious, what do you say, like, is everything okay, or how do you, you push, what, what do you do?
Um, so, and I, we had a black belt librarian training, right? Um, so first you just try to use your words and see if that works, and if not, you, um, you stand pretty far away and you kind of do this, because some people, you know, can get, be startled. If they don't wake up at that point, that's you just go and call nine-one-one. Um, and even if they are just really deep sleepers, let the professionals handle, you know, whatever that is. So we've actually talked about that recently with the, with the staff. Um, disabling computers, deleting computer files on purpose. Um, um, providing proper supervision of children, seeing the safe policy, a safe child policy for more information, um, use of library telephones without authorization, which sounds funny, but happens all the time. Um, using wheel devices in the library or on library grounds, skateboards, bicycles. Um, this is not meant to include wheelchairs, walkers, motorized ADA assistance, or strollers. Um, bringing pets and, um, or animals other than service animals, also something that's on the commonish side of odd behavior, um.
So no, no service animal?
You can, great, other than service.
Other than service.
Yes, and a therapy animal is not the same as a service animal either.
What is the difference?
Oh, we took a training on this, yeah.
Um, therapy animals can, service animals can go anywhere, therapy animals can go where they're invited.
Hmm.
That is the difference, uh, it's a different level of training.
Training.
Oh, it's okay.
It's, but, but ser-, yeah, service animals can go everywhere.
Okay.
And so when you bring in the therapy dogs for the reading, they're invited.
They're invited, they're part of our program, yeah, um. We do, we do ask for, um, the working dogs' insurance in the beginning of each year, um, so we do cover ourselves and, and the animals.
And where is all this going to be posted on the website?
Yeah, so it'll be on the website, um, I've talked to staff a little bit about where, if, if any place in the library we wanna post it. Um.
There's a lot to read.
It's a lot to read, and maybe some of it gets pulled out for different spaces, relative to different spaces that we're in. Um, some libraries do different policies for different spaces or different, this is the children's room policy, this is the YA room policy. Um, and I feel like that is too many policies, and also that we're treating the YA patrons differently than, like, why are these, all these patrons different than one another? Um, sometimes the, the YA, um, appropriate behavior policy reads very, um, you know, uh, elementary, and just kind of targets really, um, stereotypical teen behavior. Um, and I think that any patron that walks in our door needs to be treated the same and held to the same expectations. Um, so, uh, so I'd like to just keep one policy, although I know it's very long, but that's my philosophy behind it, is that everybody should be treated the same.
And the other thing is, I, I just remember when you first started with us, that, you know, you just didn't want everything to be, know this, know this, know, know, so by having it in different areas, it's just this repetition of, these are the things you can't do, so.
About what you might do, it, like, there are some things that are less, much less likely to happen or whatever, but the, the note running or something like that, you know, you could pull out half a dozen bullet points and say, you know, for further, you know, you, you know, here are the basics, you know, and for further information, please see our complete policy.
Yeah.
So that people understand there's more to it.
Yeah.
Um, something like that, if there were certain things that you wanted to make sure people were aware of on a daily basis.
Yeah, and I think it's something we have to have posted somewhere, because folks who don't have in, um, internet access are, yeah, ever, on a regular basis, um, wouldn't have, you know, access to our, to our policy, so we want people to be able to see it, but I'm thinking, I'm trying to figure out where to put it, but it's a big no.
We still have the bulletin board when you first walk in.
Yeah, yeah, it just go right on there, yeah, yeah. Um, so enforcement of this policy will be conducted promptly, consistently, and equitably. Uh, library staff will intervene to stop prohibitive behaviors, failure to comply with this, or any other library policy could result in suspension from the library, which, um, I changed that language, because you can't be expelled, uh, you can't be permanently expelled from a library. So you can be suspended for a certain amount of time, but even that actually is, um, up for debate recently. That was really standard practice, that you would, somebody has poor behavior, um, maybe they're not allowed at the library for one day, and you think, you write them a certified letter, they get the certified letter that says for one day you can't go to the library. Um, so the director in Sandwich in our last meeting was talking about how she's going through something like that with a patron, and her counsel actually told her that she cannot, uh, tell anyone that they cannot be at the library. Um.
Pick someone out for a year or two.
Wow.
You, you broke into the library and slept here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, what about somebody who brings a gun in?
I mean. I mean, well, he's just arrested, right? I mean, then the police take care of that, and he's in jail, right? So, so anyways, it's kind of been, uh, up for debate on whether you can prohibit anybody from being in a public space for a certain amount of time, and we could, if somebody's endangering the staff, we call the police, they leave for the day. But the, the argument is, we might not be able to say to them, you can't come back tomorrow. So, I, we'll say, that was always the way that you could, um, and usually you would do a buildup, so you would start, depending on the offense, you do a one. You do a one week, a three week, and then you you build up, um, to a couple of years. You could never tell somebody they could never come back ever, that was always, um, in place, but, um. But now there's a question on whether you can tell somebody they can't come back at all, so.
I have a question, maybe they just said if somebody's carrying a gun and you have carrying illegal firearms. If somebody has it legally, can they carry it?
Yeah, yeah, if they have a a legal firearm, they can come in with it.
And you're allowed to conceal, carry, carry in Massachusetts, aren't you?
I think so, but I I don't really know.
I don't really know either.
I mean, there was, not to get off topic, but there's a senator, US Senator. Who was advocating for people to bring their guns and protect schools.
Oh, yeah, lots of them will say that.
And.
Yeah.
Well, people are reading that, that case from last summer, that ruin case very broadly. So, I mean, you know, I don't know.
I just think it's.
I think calling the police if you see the gun in the library is a great idea.
Yeah, yeah, checking in.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Um, and then I said expulsion of more than one week could be appealed in writing to the library director, because I feel like that allows us that wiggle room. Um, for, eh, um, if we find that we can't suspend somebody for a certain amount of time. Then, you know, maybe it's, you know, it's just, yeah, it just gives us. Um, and then it just states the Massachusetts state law that says that, um. Theft or, um, manipulation of library materials or property, a crime punishable by imprisonment. And, oh, fine, so I just quoted that. So I don't know, I realized this was a lot, um. I can send this out to everybody, we can debate it more next meeting, or if there's anything that anybody wants to initially talk about.
Does town council review this?
Um, they don't generally review our policies, but that might be a good idea, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I I would say, yeah, that she should do it, not.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
Yeah, I I mean, it's not a bad idea, but.
Yeah.
Just make sure you're not doing anything. They have policies with regard to other departments and town.
Yeah.
Exactly, unless unless I make the call, that's what she's for.
Yeah, I think we'll do that, that's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, so why don't, so why don't we do that, you know, we'll put it on the agenda for next month, everybody take a look. You know, be ready with feedback, and in the meantime, maybe send it over to her and find out, like, when she can give us some guidance on it.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I really like Carolyn's suggestion of having something very brief, the ones that are most likely to tie up your staff. And then a reference, there's a full.
Well, and maybe could it maybe just be the, the, um, a paragraph stating that, you know. We, like, even just the first paragraph, that our expectations of people's behavior. To, um, for the safety of the staff.
Be nice.
Yeah, be nice or get out, no. Um, maybe just the first paragraph saying, you know, our expectation is, um. You know, good behavior for the safety of the staff and the volunteers and the other people that are here and. You know, for the protection of our materials.
What would you say are the top five issues that you've faced since you've been here that would fit under this?
Oh, well, regular things, let me just pull it out.
People aren't gonna read a paragraph, and you should.
Yeah.
Pick a handful of bullets.
Okay.
And, um, and even, you know, you can change the words and just condense it or whatever, but. If if you, if you actually want to communicate it and have people read it.
Yeah.
It it's gonna have to be brief and eye catching.
Okay.
Um, maybe even just announcing that we have a policy.
Yeah.
And where people can find it is all you need to do.
Or or like standards of library behavior, something like that.
Yeah.
Right, because really what you're after is notice, you know, you have to provide notice to people that a policy exists. And then if, you know, it's then shift the duty to them to find out whether, you know, what they're.
Pushing back a little bit on on not having the bullets that Carolyn's talking about, um. For humor's sake, sometimes my wife, Margie of fifty-five years, will say, sweetheart, we just talked about that. And I will say, what do you mean, we didn't talk about explicitly that you didn't want us to do X, Y, or Z? And so, at least for me, you know, no running or.
Sorry, be respectful.
Even even be respectful is sort of. Uh, that's why I asked the top five, so, okay, so.
Oh, let's see, okay. Hmm, I think interfering with another person's ability to use the library or library staff to perform their duties, I think that's broad. So that that might capture a lot of different things.
Don't disturb others.
Yeah, um.
For Steve.
Yeah.
Five words or less. You want someone to scan it and understand it.
Yeah, okay.
But it, you know, it, we can, you you can do this offline, but, um, but framing it positively.
Yeah.
You know, by saying, walk, instead of saying, don't run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She'd say, please walk.
Yeah.
Please be nice to people. You know, to, just trying to frame the, frame things in a positive way rather than all the things you can't do.
Yeah.
Will be, I think.
Yeah.
A nice way to to put it forward, if if possible.
Yeah, yeah.
Disturb others, because you don't wanna say, keep to yourself, you know.
Right.
When you say, um, please walk, and he runs and you grab him and you say. With the policy here is please walk, but it doesn't say I can't run.
I wanna get these top, your top five.
Well, so, if that's my comment about making it nice, I think that's good for like our spaces. But when it comes to something like this, I think we need to be more specific, um, and straightforward about what. Is not allowed here, and I think for signage, like we have in the children's room, you know. Walk and and friendly and upbeat, but I don't know, we can debate it offline too, but I don't know for this policy. We're really looking to paint like a.
No, not that, I'm not talking about the policy.
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, yes, I then, yes, I agree, yeah, okay.
Well, like in the healthcare setting, like you were talking about, that, you know, usually like, when you're checking in or checking out, there's like a little. Thing, like you said, sort of, unless of like the top, you know, but the broad reminders, like, please don't be abusive. The things that you say, and you're like, you really need to be told. But the only thing that's serving everybody's opportunity to use the library and, you know, the way they need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'll think about those five, let me read it through, think about the five things and maybe condense, like you said as well, uh. Well, okay, I don't have too much more, um, so, uh, we had a donation from, um. Deborah Cook, who is on the Alternative Energy Committee, um, for our Library of Things items and induction cooktop and some. We already have one, but she's, um, donating a few more electricity, um, metering devices, meter devices. That you can plug in and just see how much electricity is calling from, um, a certain device that you might have at home, um. So what we're going to be doing will, uh, the library's going to be at Ego Fest, so is Alternative Energy, of course. Um, so we'll be plugging, that will have this new display, um, we're gonna use the large display that we just, uh, purchased. That's in the middle of the library, and we'll have some of these things, and a shout out to Alternative Energy and an encouragement to go. Um, and it's actually gonna be after Ego Fest, so it's gonna be encouragement to take the things you learned at Ego Fest and continue to to use them in our lives. Um, so thank you to Deborah, that was very nice.
You know, outdoor programming is very ecologically friendly.
I know.
We might want to be promoting our pavilion at Ego Fest.
That's my, that's my purpose of going to Ego Fest, yeah, so last year we brought books, I'm not doing that, I'm bringing our posters and our. Postcards and all of those things, um, so that's what I'll be discussing at Ego Fest, yeah. And that's on the twentieth of May in the comment, if anybody's interested, it should be a lot of fun.
Hmm.
Um, so we'll be at Ego Fest, we're setting up our story walk soon, um. Our summer reading under the tent events are starting up soon, we have teen binge bags, starting this summer, which I'm really excited about. So Alison has put together, it's a movie that is based on a book, and it's gonna have, the bag's also gonna have popcorn and chips. And anything that you would need to to binge, so it's a snack and a movie, um, and you can check it out.
Getting the movie, or they're just told that go see this movie and here's like things you can have.
Um, you can, you get the DVD, yeah, yeah, so, um. Yeah, so she's good at checking those out to kiddos, and then when she gets them back, she'll restock them, so. Just depends on, so she's gonna have five or six of them, and then as they go wild, she'll restock the snacks.
I think it was a group project, but no, like, as you wanna do it, you go and check that out.
Yes, yeah, um, so. And then other projects, our website designs actually move, starting to move forward, which is very exciting, we had a kickoff meeting yesterday. And I'm working with staff on filling out forms and creating, um, deliverables for the company, and so once we get to, um. Something that presents as a real design, I'll be bringing it to the board to take a look and and have comments, um, but we've been pushing this company to. To get going for a while, and so finally, we have a timeline and we're moving forward, and so they're saying like the end of June. They think that we'll, we'll be moving on this, so, um. Still working on marketing, uh, GoGov, the CRM platform better, um, and also. I think we're still waiting to hear back about doing a passport service, so that's still on.
I just finally, I heard from the first step, moving on to the next step, and you have the, uh. Email, if you're interested, and just came with a whole packet, the problem is they emailed me twice with two different addresses to reach out to. One is the Buffalo Passport Station, and the other is in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. We have one in Boston, I have no idea why they thought that Buffalo might be the one that I wanna talk to, so. Followed up, I haven't heard back, I think it's going to take a while.
Yeah.
But, um, it it sounds like something we could easily offer here.
So I'm speaking in applications.
Yes, yeah, and you process them, and you can, you can charge thirty-five dollars, and that can go to the library funds, um. You just, there's just certain rules of how to do it, certified, um. And you can do it at other libraries that do it, it's just a couple that they do, uh, by appointment. So it wouldn't have to be that, now if it was me doing it, that I'd have to be, you know, drop everything, and have someone came in, but, um. We have a copy machine here, it just seem like a really good, um, it makes sense to be easy.
Would they have to come ask the residents?
Yeah, and, um, you, I don't know if anybody's ever recently applied for a passport, it's, there's a number of different documents you have to bring, so. It's more, um, accepting all the documents, verifying that the person is who they said they are, and then forwarding them all to the passport. Station, and then they take it further, so it wouldn't be that, you know, I'm giving out passports or anything.
I just went through that process, I said at our last meeting, I'd look into it.
Yeah.
And, um, had a horrible time, went to AAA. They advertised that they have this relationship with, uh, Rush Passports Now. And, uh, didn't get the information I needed, left them six calls, no response. Ended up going to, uh, Hingham, um, post office, bam, 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 done. And when I looked into further details, there was some fine print that would have been an extra three hundred dollars. And this is something you'd think AAA would.
Yeah.
So, having something here would be really.
Yeah, that's right, my kids want, sometimes we have to wait, we really want lines, and it's, there's only one person that's authorized to do it, and. It can take a while, so it seems like it might be a good service.
Right now, they're saying seven to nine weeks, unless you're traveling in the next fourteen days, and then it's eight hundred dollars. I did call beforehand.
So what, what was the issue with notarizing?
Because the town is not allowing any department to offer notarization.
But what does that serve as insurance?
Uh, they said that we are not, we don't have the insurance to cover that, I don't really know, like, I guess if someone had a fall sign. Sign that it was, they said, you know. I I don't, I don't know, um, I had to get something notarized, and they, they were doing it at the Historical Society. Um, Abigail Alves, but, um, she wasn't really sure, because her twin sister works at the town clerk store, and she was told not to do it. So Abigail's like, I don't know, but until I'm told not to, I'm still doing it.
So you can still have it done at the Historical Society.
Yeah, as of two weeks ago, yeah, and I don't know if they've exchanged there, but.
I'm very surprised. As your own agent at the notary.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm really, I'm, I'm very surprised, all town halls, that's a, a classic place to get it done, and we thought we would also offer it too. Um, because we open different hours and just be good service, but, um, as of right now, we don't.
Maybe what we could do is, you know, well, I don't know how you would go about doing it, but if we just had a list of people in town who are notaries that.
Yeah. I know, I think UPS does. Charge, I mean, um, the town hall was only, let's see, the free, they knew you were five dollars or something. Other places might charge.
Pilgrim Co-op, doesn't it? Pilgrim Co-op, the bank, oh, not Pilgrim anymore, whatever they are, Abington.
But do you have an account there?
I don't know, I have an account, it's free when you're.
Well, that's the guy that was in the other day, that you were helping with his.
Oh, yeah.
Documents, and he didn't know where to go, and I think he had, they say he was going to the bank.
Yeah, and that was hard, because English wasn't his first language, so he was really, um, trying to figure out.
Sounds, and he wasn't, he wasn't sure about, you know, rotations around and whatnot, but, anyway. That's where we're at, so. All right, that's everything. Um, I have too much to start, bills go, um. We have our big magazine renewal, that's the EFSKO, um. When to Work is our scheduling software, that's an annual renewal, trustees, uh, is the, um. World's end and and that sort of thing, those are the, the only ones that are unusual, um. We did wanna mention two quick things, the state aid second, uh. Transfer has gone through, so we've got another state aid for the year, so that's great. And then the only other thing was something that just came up this afternoon, so I hadn't included it, um. Some, we don't know, I'm not really sure what happened, but some of the pavilion funds. Were about fifty thousand dollars were credited to our endowment account. Back in January, and I check the report every month, it hasn't been on there, and it showed up this week.
Hmm.
So, I, you know, obviously, I keep them. It, we're, it's not our money, it's the pavilion money, but it's, yeah, so, yeah, we, we, we're having a great week. So that's what my question is, I think it's, I'm sure that you guys, Barbara or whatever, are keeping track of how much has come in. I don't know why it got credited, and it's back to January, but it just showed up, so I talked to. Uh, Linda Cole, who is the treasurer, she said, that's weird, because I was just talking about it today with the town accountant, they just noticed it. So, um, they'll be, they're gonna reverse it and and put it back in, but it's a little concerning because it's like.
Yeah, no kidding.
And, you know, if the CLT thinks they have the money and they go to spend it. Yeah, it's just, it it was about a little.
Unnoticed for such a long time, like what?
And I look back at the other reports, because I get one every month from the town, and then I print it out and I check to be sure that all of the bills are coming out correctly. And the payroll is all in there, it wasn't in there. And the payroll is all in there. It wasn't in there. It's not even on the one that I got um, for May first.
And we haven't, we haven't even raised fifty thousand dollars in the last month. So that's, that's weird. Yeah, they've all been there.
Here's the, where it shows up.
Yeah.
It's two different deposits. That total about a little over fifty thousand dollars, like thirty-eight thousand and.
Alright, I'll share this with Barbara.
Yeah, so, um.
Thank you.
Linda was on it, it's, I, again, I'm not trying to make, sound like, oh, this is now, whole town's wrong part, but it's a little concerning. That 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 much money didn't enter.
It was probably supposed to go to any of these representatives.
Yeah, they do have an account um, that shows up on some of the reports and that show like if there's a, you know, negatives for the month. Or ga- gains and losses and that sort of thing. Or if someone donates money, then that just goes in that kind, it doesn't go into our, we can't spend it, it's supposed to be invested, you know, so.
Yeah. I know you're gonna get to the bottom of it, because you're awesome at that. Thank you. Thanks for raising it.
Yeah, so that's all, that is it unless anyone has any other questions or concerns or comments or anything.
Yeah, I, um. Don't move, yeah, okay, click, we'll go on the pay the bills, make it crazy.
I have.
Yes.
Uh, Sarah P. is.
Yes.
Um, Lloyd Russell.
Yes, Mary Lou Lawrence.
Um, okay, so that is down to me. I don't have much, um, except that we had a CLT meeting last night. For me, um, and uh, we're at one sixty still, is that right? One one sixty-six, six, okay, one sixty-six. Uh, creeping up. Yeah, so.
Those gifts coming.
That's right, we're, we're getting there. And um, we have had an offer from an anonymous donor to do a match up to ten thousand dollars.
That's great.
Though, if there are people out there who have um, indicated to you that they are interested in giving and they have not given yet. Or if you were waiting for the right time personally, now's the time. So definitely go back to your people. If you have people, you know, open items and let them know that now we have, um, you know, with a little bit of urgency. Because we're trying to get to one seventy-five for Memorial Day and we're so close and now we have this match, so. And and we we are gonna publicize it, but we're, we're hoping that um, we're working on another person to get a bigger pool of money.
Mm-hmm.
To make a bigger splash before we put it out there to the public. So if we can say we have twenty thousand dollars in um, potential matching gifts, please give now and double your money, blah, blah, blah. So we, this was not one that we, we, we've been working on for other people for this money and this one was just across. So, um, so that was wonderful. And so now, uh, you know, we're just gonna try and pool it. So that, so that we can make a, you know, a big splash with it, um. You know, we talked about it today, we're, we're talking about a sign um, out here. And um, and maybe doing like a big um, vinyl banner of the renderings to try and, you know. You know, have people envision it, kinda like George Mulgulbricks, um. Development staff at the Harvard, you know, they've got that big poster where you can kind of see what it's gonna look like when it's done. You know, maybe we can generate some interest if we have that up here. Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it. Yeah, that's, um, and that's, that's really, I don't need to have anything other than that, so that's. How effective are those thermometers? That we're, like, are they effective or not effective?
Uh, we don't know, but we.
It's just hype, we're just trying to create some hype and and awareness. We, the, the idea is to try, all those people that we have asked for donations.
That is saying, okay, I gotta remember to do that. It's so that when they drive by the corner.
Oh, sure, I didn't do that.
They remember to do that, you know.
That's great.
Yeah, um, and we're just trying to do, um, like a percentage rather than set them out. Because, you know, we're gonna keep going as long as we can.
Right, right. So maybe instead of like those notches, we could have.
We're doing percentages.
Right, but also just, you could have like even just some graphics of kids and older people. And just so that it shows that this is for the entire community, but it isn't just, you know.
Yeah.
Story hour outside.
Right. Well, I think the rendering has, you know, it has people up on the patio, it has people sitting in the amphitheater. I think we'll just take one of those renderings and and make it large, just to to paint the picture.
Right.
Um, so is that matching ten thousand in effect now? Uh, it's so, it's of us who haven't given yet, if we wanted to give it would be match.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. Double your money, yeah, right now. Now's the time.
Do you put out that poster during mom and stuff, like, cause right now there's twenty-five friends to donate to friends. Is that always out there or not?
Oh, yeah.
Nice, yeah.
Well, we have the pavilion ones out too. They're just near the team room, like in the main lobby. I know. Those are kind of, have to be careful about pushing too much.
So that's CLT and that was my report. That's basically all I have. Uh, the Friends meeting um, was last week. I also missed that meeting, but I did check in with Beth and she said that it ended up being a really good year for the appeal. And that they're gonna be helping next year. Um, and the, uh, they don't have, they. Forward to staying intact, which is also the news, um, because we've had some, you know, attrition the last few years. And that's basically it for the Friends. They're kind of wanting to have it here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that is it for me, unless anybody has anything new they'd like to discuss. No? Any other motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor? Alright.
Thank you.